Okay. Hello, everybody. We're ready to begin our meeting December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The meeting of the IDA is now called order. It appears we have a quorum, but we'll do the roll call. Maria?
Sherry Boye is absent. James Ellis.
Present.
Steven Erman is absent. Madeline Flurry.
Present.
Justice Martin.
Present.
Archie McKee is not here yet. Nate Minat.
Here.
Jeremy Evans is also present. Maria Bourgeois, Genevieve Triggs, Barclay Damon, Rachel Child, and Russ Kenyon.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any changes to the agenda before we move on to public comments?
The revised agenda in front of you is different than what was shared over the weekend. We've added Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash nineteen, but that's, you know, that's what's in front of you. So if you accept this agenda, you're all set.
Did everyone hear that? Yes. Are there any objections? If not, we'll assume twenty, the Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash nineteen is added to the agenda for today's meeting. A public comment, any public comment? If not, we'll move on to the approval of the previous meeting minutes of November ninth. You all received a copy of those minutes. Are there any changes or additions or deletions? If not, we'll assume the question's been moved. All those in favor of accepting the previous meeting minutes of November ninth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Need a motion first.
I'll make a motion.
Madeline motions.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Second justice? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Bills and communications, Jeremy?
None to report today.
Bills and communications, none to report. Committee reports? Anti-harassment? Audit and finance?
Archie is not here. I'll just mention, I don't know if there's a sub, a vice chair for the committee, but the committee meant last week to go over a couple of things. One of the items they reviewed and later on the agenda is the, the investment policy. So we can, we can provide more info when we get to that item.
Okay, and about employee?
Yes, we did discuss employee compensation. No action to recommend yet.
Okay. Downtown revitalization and tourism. That's Archie also, I guess. Correct? Economic development? Entrepreneurship and agriculture.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Governance?
Nothing to report there either.
Very good. Thank you all. Treasurers report, Jeremy?
Yeah, turn that over to Paul.
Um, nothing uniquely different in the treasurer's report. Still work through some of the accounting. Most of the items that I now need to focus in on, I'll need to work in partnership with our auditor to adjust some odd balances here and there.
Thank you. Move to accept treasurer's report? Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by justice, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Nate? All those in favor of signify of accepting the treasurer's report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, Nate? The ayes have it. Old and unfinished business? The only old business that I'm going to bring up and I'll, I'll have it ready for the next meeting is our committee assignments as to who is going to be on and also which what part of the committees. Everybody's going to get a chairmanship, so don't worry about being left out. CEO report, Jeremy?
Just a short one for the IDA. Just wanted to, just mentioned everyone that I have met with all employees just to provide feedback, get their feedback and conduct our performance appraisals and I need to make a couple notes and provide the actual reports to the employees, but we're otherwise in good shape there. Wanted to mention that we received the draft for the, the facilities assessment for the Bombay factory.
Very good.
Just the other day, we haven't even gone through it all, but we, it's a going to be really valuable information for, for us to try to figure out what our strategy is moving forward with the Bombay factory. So I'll be sharing that with the entire board via email as soon as I get a chance.
How do the, I'm sorry, with respect to the Bombay factory, how did the garage door thing work out? All secured?
The, the other building, the garage door has been secured, yes. Yep. And then the only, the really what's been, been taking some time in a good way is just thinking through where we've been trying to categorize, catalog everything we've been accomplishing this year and then trying to figure out what our two thousand and twenty-three plan should be. And under FC EDC business, we'll get into more detail about that.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there still any potential for a lease of the factory?
Yeah, we're still working through that and, and some of the, well, a lot of information from this report was key to being able to further that, that conversation.
And we're still talking to the same party?
Yeah.
Yep, very good. Very good. Thank you, Jeremy. New business, number of resolutions? Let's go to two thousand and twenty-two dash fifteen. Anything to say there, Jeremy?
Well, if I could, what I would do is, is provide a little bit of background that's the same for all three projects, just to move, just to move the discussion along.
That's great.
So as
Twenty-two, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as, as you all know, we, we, these are projects that are, have been proposed by Nexamp Corporation. Of the, the, they're all community scale solar projects, which means that once operational, the power from them is sold to local residential and commercial consumers. Each of them, it is proposed that each of them have the same incentive terms. And in summary, that is that the per-megawatt rate that will be used to determine the pilot payment would be fifty-five hundred dollars per megawatt. There was a two percent escalator proposed, so you start fifty-five hundred dollars a megawatt, but every year it goes up two percent. And that it's a fifteen-year term. These are the same exact terms that we used for the two projects that we approved a year ago in the town of Bangor. Nothing, it's exactly the same. For each of these, we held a public hearing in the town in which the project is proposed. So as you know, a couple of weeks ago, we held a public hearing in the town of Fort Covington or Covington Solar One and Covington Solar Two. The minutes and transcript from those meetings were provided to the board and are included in the resolution documentation. There was good, good questions from the town supervisor and from legislature, legislator Paul Lozon. Though that was the only public comment that we've received either in writing or in person. And they, they had questions, not, not opinions on the, on the project. They were just questions. And the Covington Solar One specifically is a five-megawatt capacity project. And just a little bit of reminder, over a year ago, the board and this, this resolution's included in the documentation as well. The board approved what's called the initial resolution, which says, yes, we will entertain looking at it, at this project. And then it's, then you're authorizing myself and counsel to go and negotiate and, and figure out if there's an actual project. For a lot of reasons that are not really that important at this juncture, the project was paused. There's multiple reasons. It was just kind of on pause for a while, but there was also other things that the company needed to do to get the project ready. And then it was kind of brought back to the forefront to us a couple of months ago. And that's when we got updated project cost information. We scheduled the public hearing. And now we're presenting the resolution that actually approves the benefits that are laid out in the resolution. I provided for everybody the required cost benefit analysis, which is the spreadsheet, the table for each of these projects that tries to summarize or highlight the most, you know, the actual, the financial implications of this project. Because it's the board's responsibility to determine that the benefits being provided upon, through, through the IDA are worth it compared to the costs. And so this, this gives you all that data to make, to try to make a, a reasoned decision. The second page, which is less important to this board, but really important to the taxing jurisdictions. We're not required to provide it, but we provide a, a, an estimate of what, how the pilot payment is broken down and distributed to each of the taxing jurisdictions. In this case, for, for Covington, it would be the town of Fort Covington, Franklin County, and the Salmon River School District. It's important to remember that the overall pilot, we collect the overall pilot payment, but then we distribute a portion to each jurisdiction based on their, their percentage of the overall tax rate property. We provide the second page for taxpayers, but also the jurisdictions to understand what that breakout is going to be approximately. I think that gives a brief summary, and I would open it up to any board members. If you have any specific questions, both about an individual project or what we're doing overall.
I don't have any particular questions, but it, it appears that it's still a lot of bookwork and paperwork for us to do. Is that, in other words, everything comes into us and then we distribute it out?
Correct.
The taxing jurisdiction.
Yes, right. So, so, so we're actually preparing for this right now, where in the next couple of weeks, we will receive information, updated tax roll information from the county. And then Maria will be generating invoices to send out to multiple projects that we have benefits with. And then, and then they have the month of January to remit payment to us. And then we distribute it out to each of the jurisdictions based on the formula for that pilot.
What is the payment in January? Is that all for, for all the period of time in the pilot's going to apply?
One year.
What, just one year?
Yeah.
So in other words, it's renewable every January?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep. We bill annually.
Very good. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Anyone else? Any, any questions up there to Malone? We'll take each of these resolutions separately, I guess, in order, in order to make sure that there's no question about what we're doing.
And, and more so than, than other resolutions, these require, I believe these require a roll call vote.
Well, it's, it's been my practice to do it anyways. That way they're, we're sure. Um, I think we'll do this one at a time right now for fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Okay.
Uh, resolution number twenty, twenty-two dash fifteen is Covington Solar One LLC. And I'm asking if we have a motion to authorize the resolution?
Make the motion.
Motion made by justice to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash fifteen, Covington Solar One. Second?
I'll second it. Nate?
Pardon me?
Nate.
I thought it was.
So can I just ask one quick question before we go? So this is just to authorize going forward with the projects?
Exactly. You're approving, you're approving the project. Yep.
Yeah, any other questions?
I, yeah, one more question is Solar One, Solar Two. Now, Solar One is off of Route thirty-seven?
They're both right next to each other. Yep.
Yeah, when, and one, I don't, I keep getting them confused. One's a little bit closer to the road, one's a little bit further back, but they are right next to each other on the right-hand side as you're going towards Fort Covington.
Yeah, right on that corner there, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we'll assume the motion is now ready for a roll call vote. Maria?
Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash fifteen, Covington Solar One LLC authorizing resolution. Sherry Boye is absent. James Ellis.
Yes.
Steven Erman is absent. Madeline Flurry.
Yes.
Justice Martin.
Yes.
Archie McKee is absent. Nate Minat.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, everybody. Now we go on to Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash sixteen, Covington Solar Two LLC authorizing resolution. A motion, please, to get it on the floor? Make the motion? Motion made by justice for Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash sixteen, Covington Solar Two. Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Madeline? Is, are there any questions or is there any further discussion?
I do have another question. I'm sorry. Um, I know we just did Solar One.
Yes.
That, is this package that is here, is that a combination or is it?
You have separate ones down there, Madeline, with the name.
Up on the very top.
Sorry. I have for
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, all right. Okay, that's my question.
Thank you. Any further questions, anyone? If not, we'll assume the motion's been called for Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash sixteen, Covington Solar Two LLC authorizing resolution. Roll call vote, Maria. Thank you.
Okay, two thousand and twenty-two sixteen, Covington Solar Two LLC authorizing resolution. Sherry Boye is absent. James Ellis.
Yes.
Steven Erman is absent. Madeline Flurry.
Yes.
Justice Martin.
Yes.
Archie McKee is absent. Nate Minat.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, everybody. Now we'll consider Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash seventeen, Burke Solar LLC authorizing resolution. A motion, please, to accept and to vote on Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash seventeen. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Madeline, second?
I'll second it.
Second by justice? Any questions? Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll assume that Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash seventeen, Burke Solar LLC authorizing resolution is now on the floor and ready to be voted upon. Maria?
Okay, Resolution two thousand and twenty-two seventeen, Burke Solar LLC authorizing resolution. Sherry Boye is absent. James Ellis.
Yes.
Steven Erman is absent. Madeline Flurry.
Yes.
Justice Martin.
Yes.
Archie McKee is absent. Nate Minat.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, everybody. Now we move on to Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash eighteen, to amend the investment policy. And I think a quick summary from our, our staff.
I'll let, I'll let Paul talk about this. And yeah, this was, this was a discussion in the audit and finance committee as well.
Okay, I think Jeremy's going to pull up some information, but while he's doing that, one of the concerns and questions that had been asked when I was talking with a, a number of the board members when I first came on board was, you know, all right, what can we do with our money? We got, we got money that we can invest. But, you know, what, what can we do? So um, I did some investigating. I did talk to Sherry. I looked at other banks. We can't really go out. I, I know there's some online banking, but we're prohibited uh, from investing in banks out of state that don't have a brick and mortar in-state. Um, so our options are very limited because we have to put security first of our funds. We can't invest in uh, mutual funds or stocks or directly into the bond market. So with the Federal Reserve increasing interest rates over the last several months, the treasury market with the US Treasury has started coming back online and we're looking at investing directly with the US Treasury and it's called Treasury Direct. And what I've done on the spreadsheet that you see here, I've given some examples of the maximum out that we're kind of earning right now and are checking what we potentially could earn on a money market. And then the four-eight-week T-bills with the three-month T-bills, these are interest rates that are presently in the ballpark of what we can get by investing the funds. So it would be my plan to invest these monies in a staggered approach over a four-eight-week period. I might do one or two, three months. Uh, the, the key is to make sure that we have sufficient capital on hand. So I wouldn't be draining our checking account down completely. Um, I'd make sure we had sufficient cash, but also would be staggering these so that they would be maturing at different times. So based upon what market rates are right now, I'm estimating that we could generate um, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars, depending upon if rates continue to go up over the next twelve months. In order to do this program, we needed to amend our investment policy to include the US Treasury as an investment option. So that's what you're going to ultimately be approving is the revision or the amendment of the investment policy. These funds, because they're invested directly with the federal government, it's the full faith and, and take it for what you want uh, of the federal government. So we're not going to be none of the capital or none of the principles at risk. So um, and basically it works like, you know, like a, a bank account. Actually, once I discovered this, I've opened up personally. Anybody can open one up for themselves. And it's, uh, basically what they, you do is you go in, you enter in how much you want to invest. When an auction comes up, we don't actually place a bid, but when it's closed, the federal government picks the best bid and everybody gets that amount. So uh, and basically it's discounted. So for instance, on a thousand-dollar T-bill that I did, you know, they only took about nine, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars out of my account. That's, they repay you the face value of the T-bill. So it, it's pretty, it, it's automatic in and out of our checking account. That's about it, unless anybody has any questions.
But I have a question.
Sure.
How do you figure thirty to forty-five thousand dollars?
So
earnings on that?
So Jeremy, if you want to put that, the spreadsheet back up? So basically, the IDA and the EDC have about four hundred thousand. I could probably, I could squeak it even more than that, especially once we get the pilot money in.
Sure.
That would allow us to invest even more. So what I did is based upon, you know, if we did a three-month, our annual income just for the EDC and just for the IDA would each be seventeen thousand dollars.
That's per year, right?
Right, per year.
So
so whenever they give an interest rate, it is APR, annual percentage rate. But I plan on keeping four hundred thousand rolling over, maturing at different times, but always investing about four hundred thousand.
The four-week T-bill, just say, after four weeks it matures?
Yes.
Then what do you do?
I can reinvest it.
In another four-week T-bill? Is that the plan?
I can do that, or I could do an eight-week if, if, if I know we have enough cash on the end. Once I'm comfortable with our cash level, and if, if, if the Federal Reserve next year starts to taper their rates, I might start to lock in a thirteen-week. They also have twenty-six weeks and fifty-two weeks, but that's not what I'm proposing right now. But down the road, once we have a really good handle on cash, and if I can lock in a, a twenty-six at five percent, I'll lock it in. Because I, I do think we will see an increase in interest rates in the first half of next year, and then I think the Federal Reserve's going to back off a little bit. But this is based upon a four hundred thousand in some fashion, be consistently vested from both, from each of them. Yeah. And they each get their own.
Any further questions? If not, we'll assume the question's been moved. And that being the case, Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash eighteen, amending the investment policy is now ready for approval or nonapproval. Go ahead, Madeline.
Oh, I, we still need a motion?
Yeah, we don't have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I got the second who made it. I'm sorry.
What's that?
Nate made the motion.
Nate.
Nate.
Second by justice. Yep.
Gotcha.
Very good. So there being no further questions, go ahead, Maria. We'll uh, call the roll for approval or nonapproval of Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash eighteen.
Okay, two thousand and twenty-two dash eighteen, amend investment policy. Sherry Boye is absent. James Ellis.
Yes.
Steven Erman is absent. Madeline Flurry.
Yes.
Justice Martin.
Yes.
Archie McKee is absent. Nate Minat.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, everybody. And now Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash nineteen is ready for approval or disapproval? It is for executing the Bombay warehouse lease. Jeremy?
Try to make this quick. It does deserve a couple of minutes since it's new to you, and I apologize for that, but the River Valley Antique Tractor and Engine Club caught wind that we have the, the Bombay warehouse and asked if they would be able to lease enough space for several months through the winter to store their sled. That's the, that's the device that, or trailer that they pull in their competitions through the, the drag that they pull. They just want to get that, they want to keep it dry and out of the elements. And so this would be for five months. We've reviewed this, myself, Paul, and Matt McCartel. And we will provide adequate insurance and all that kind of stuff. And we would propose a minimal uh, fee in order for them to, to lease the space at fifty dollars a month for that five-month term. And that's, that's about it.
So assume that everybody that you mentioned recommends approval?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Right.
Uh, so we're ready for consideration of Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash nineteen of the Uh, so we're ready for consideration of resolution twenty twenty two dash nineteen of the um. Bombay warehouse lease to the tractor and truck group. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Madeline. Second by who? Motion. Okay, second by Justice.
That's a question.
Yeah, question.
Um, wha- what was the reason that was the fifty dollars like that obviously seems? Uh, is there, is that what they offer?
Well, we we tried to figure out what they could afford versus making sure we covered our costs and weren't giving it away and. And that was one of the things we discussed with Matt and we just, we just felt that. They're not even gonna be going in and out, it's just, it's really about, it's about fifty by eight feet wide. And so we tried to keep it simple and affordable just to to help them out.
Any other questions? If not, we'll assume, I'm sorry.
A quick question, is the town of Bombay still using that warehouse or is that?
They're using, yeah, they're using a portion of it and I didn't wanna, I didn't want to overload the board at last minute, but I actually do have a new lease. With the town of Bombay to propose to the board in January.
That's it.
Very good, any other questions? If not, we'll assume resolution twenty twenty two dash nineteen to execute the Bombay warehouse lease as indicated within our packets. Uh, we'll assume we're ready for the vote, Maria?
Okay, and we'll also note that Archie McKee has arrived, so this is for resolution twenty twenty two dash nineteen lease of the Bombay warehouse. Sherry Boye is absent, James Ellis.
Yes.
Stephen Erman is absent, Madeline Flurry.
Yes.
Justice Martin.
Yeah.
Archie McKee.
Yes.
Nate Manette.
Yes.
Okay, the resolution's adopted.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Uh, due to the need to uh. Need a time requirement here by two o'clock, uh I'm assuming there will be no executive session or need for executive session, is there?
We do not need one.
Very good. Uh, date of our next meeting will be January eleventh, twenty twenty three, wow. That concludes this part of the meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna stop recording and then start again.
Are you gonna have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Madeline made some motion.
Madeline makes a motion to adjourn just a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?